All right, today is Thursday, June 20th and I would like to call the regular meeting to order at 6:02 PM. Looks like a coincidence that, but can I have a roll call?
Mr. Craddy?
Here.
Mr. Bittman?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Cogliano?
Here.
Mrs. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mrs. Wiley?
Here.
All right, with that we'll move to number two, closed session, so I will make a motion to move into closed session at 6:03 PM as indicated in the agenda here.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Craddy, can I have a roll call?
Mr. Cogliano?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bittman?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
All right, we'll go downstairs. All righty then.
Oh.
And Earl Strachan.
I'm trying to figure out.
They, on the first event, because I was watching.
That one?
They went from first to second or third.
Really?
Yeah. But they were in the last event, so two of the teams were up there, were in there, so it's a two to one.
Chinese.
I've never seen, or double, left the double.
All right.
Well, I don't know what to make, could I make, I just, I don't really want second question.
They don't know how to answer it.
They don't know how to answer it, so I was going to change it.
Their ears still unmegged.
Purpose of the fundraiser.
Yeah. And I'm also going to add a separate line in here for the activities.
Got it.
To read a word.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I thought that was funny though.
Yeah, I've always looked at it and, yeah, you're probably right.
That is supposed to be this, this. Where'd it go? Oh, way over here. Where'd it go? Oh, it's below, below here. Oh. What? Ooh, this goes way back. That seems to, I always like to see the gauge of where the all-in-at-the-meter is. I haven't been paying attention to any tell.
Yep. The unit apparently needs to be at some of this.
Last one.
Holy crap.
That's the end of the form.
Yep.
Okay. So it ain't that the forms all the capacity, something else wrong. That's, um, I think that is supposed to be, yeah, I'm wrong. Oh no, there's the NICOR charges.
Mm-hmm.
And there's the.
I always make sure NICOR is symmetry. And then the true up.
R? Oh, that's R. E. E. Is terms, oh, so that's the unit price on each, each one. And why is that an error? Because R is an error. And. Just the numbers.
I know the true up was off for a little bit.
Oh, it's all down on this. It's back, oh, there's a circle in here, is there? E six. That's W six.
E. It's. Not unit, what you could hear.
Mr. Craddy?
All right, good evening, everyone. We are, uh, going to, uh, do a Zoom. I might not be able to. For Zoom and public session, uh, at 6:55 PM on Thursday, June 20th of the, uh, Pledge of Beating, uh, we just finished, uh, closed session, uh, so can I have a little call?
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Crady?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mrs. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Bibbitt?
Here.
Mr. Quaglano?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
All right, so that, there was no action, uh, coming out of closed session, so let's get that, and we'll move on to the pledge allegiance, and I think we have Joseph here.
Yeah.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with all due due service for all.
Got to stay in the limelight for just a little bit longer, I hope, so, um, Joseph is one of our seventh, well, was, going into eighth grade next year, some great students at Marlo, and, uh, last meeting, we had some of our students that were, uh, down from Marlo, uh, for track and field, and you were out of town, maybe doing another sport?
Mm, sure. My brother.
Right, your brother, okay, so, yeah, so wasn't able to be there, uh, and we wanted to make sure that we were able to recognize, so I did a little bit of my checking to make sure I had my facts right, learned a new track and field, uh, terminology, um, Joseph took fifth place in the mile at state for seventh grade, um, with breaking a sub of five, so under five, which some of you all know of, and he's been... So, as of that, it was four minutes, fifty-eight seconds, and, uh, did confirm that is also a seventh grade record over at Marlo, so congratulations. I don't think I'd like you to come around, a little different than that one, but if you want to come around this direction. You've got some gold cards here, yeah? Yes. Yes. I failed to announce Joseph last night, because Joseph's the wacky, what, can we give him one more round of applause?
Hold on, Mr. Thompson, you're a little hidden.
There you go. There you go.
All right, we'll see you next year.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. All right, moving on to number five, we have a fair amount of student recommendations, and we're going to start with the Tumpli High School girls' track team, which is Coach Gallagher and Coach Thompson. Bringing in some hard work.
We're going to have them all come up and stand here, so we're going to introduce each of them and, and kind of recognize their accomplishments, and then we'll kind of go through the team accomplishments as well, so, they're finding their way to spread out here, so they can, uh, be recognized, um, first of all, thank you for... First of all, thank you for having us. I apologize that we weren't able to come at the earlier June board meeting. But we were running our youth camp and most of these athletes were very important to running that youth camp. So we couldn't be there on that night. So I appreciate you guys putting this off and letting us come in June to recognize just what it is these girls accomplished. I know that I speak for all of our coaching staff when I say that we are incredibly blessed. We get to work with incredible young women on a daily basis who are, from what we've experienced, some of the most dedicated and bought-in athletes that I've ever had the privilege of working with. And I know our coaching staff would feel the same way. This year, we continued much of the success that we've had over the last four to five years. We brought home our third straight Fox Valley Conference championship this year. We brought home our third straight sectional championship this year. And for the Fox Valley Conference, we've won it now six out of seven years in a row. Six of the last seven years. So we're incredibly grateful for these girls carrying on that tradition of success. And they were able to take that and carry it into the postseason. So we're going to have each of our state qualifiers kind of step forward. And I'm going to introduce them and what they competed in. We, in total, qualified twelve out of eighteen events for the state meet this year, which is absolutely incredible. We'll start with Dominique Johnson, step forward. Dominique qualified in both the long jump and the triple jump. And I'm going to get into the success of the state meet when I get to the second part. So thank you, Dominique. Next, step forward, we have Addie Bueson. Addie Bueson also qualified for the state meet in the triple jump, setting a personal record at the sectional meet. Next up, step forward, Gianna Howard. Gianna qualified for the state meet in the high jump. Next up, step forward, Sienna Robertson. Gianna qualified for the state meet in the discus. Next up, I don't know if she's here yet, Elena Fester. Let me get her here. Step up, Elena Fester. Elena qualified in the shot put. She set a personal record at the sectional meet. She took the number five spot all time in program history in the shot put. And she's a freshman, so that's very cool. Okay, next up, we have our four-by-800-meter relay of Morgan Sauber, Aspen Maldonado, Corey Kilbinger, Haley Ramon, and Izzy Chesla. Step forward. These girls qualified for the state meet at the same time at the sectional meet they set our school record. So now they hold our indoor and our outdoor school record for the four-by-800-meter relay. Next up, we have the four-by-100-meter relay of Sofi Amin, Emmy Byers, Haley Sines, Vicky Eftomov, and Dominique Johnson. These girls at the sectional meet set our school record and they set the stadium all-time record in the four-by-100 meters. In case you guys didn't get these girls, then just go in in order of events. So next up, we have the 100 hurdles. Step forward, Sofi Amin. Sofi, this year at the sectional meet, she set the school record and again, set the all-time stadium record. Next up, we have Morgan Sauber. Morgan qualified for the state meet in the 800 meters. Next up, we have the four-by-200-meter relay of Dominique Johnson, Emmy Byers, Haley Sines, Vicky Eftomov, and Sofi Amin. This four-by-200-meter relay set the school record and also set the stadium all-time record at the sectional meet this year. Next up, we have Vicky Eftomov in the 200 meters. Vicky at the state meet set the school record and again, set the all-time stadium record in the 200 meters. And finally, we have our four-by-400-meter relay team of Emmy Byers, Addie Bueson, Morgan Sauber, Haley Sines, and Abby Williams. Step forward. So in total, we got to bring fifteen girls down to the state meet. So this is the state team that you see before you that attended and competed for us at that meet. We're now going to recognize the medalists and then get into the team accomplishments. So our first medalist out of the discus, Sienna Robertson, took fifth place in the state. Our second medalist in third place in the long jump was Dominique Johnson. Our third medalist taking second place in the 100-meter hurdles was Sofi Amin. And now we have our three state champions. Our first state champion was Dominique Johnson in the triple jump. Back-to-back triple jump championships for Dominique. And she gets to come back and go for another one next year. Okay, next, our four-by-100-meter relay team. We step forward. These girls were the first ever relay, or actually, ever medal on the track. Prior to this team taking it to the state this year, we only ever had field event athletes get medals at the state meet. So they went out and got our first, I'm sorry, first relay, first state championship on the track. So that was pretty amazing. They actually ran the seventh fastest time ever at the state meet of Illinois. About an hour and a half later, our second relay state champion stepped on the track. Our four-by-200-meter relay stepped forward. And these girls, Coach Gallagher, just went through a lot of history to go back, what, forty years, probably?
Forty-five.
Forty-five years to look at times from the state meet. This group of girls right here ran the third fastest time ever in state meet history in the four-by-200 meter. In total, the team behind you put up fifty points for the second consecutive year and came home with another state trophy. We finished runner-up to prospect, to come home with a state trophy, which you see over here for two years in a row. If you recall, last year, we came here as state champs. And to come back as runner-up this year is quite an incredible accomplishment for our program and for these ladies and many of them that were a part of both of those teams. So we're incredibly proud of you all. All right. Go ahead, Jean. Put that up there.
How many are seniors?
Three.
Four?
Only four are seniors.
Or, um, only three seniors.
Or, you know, four, four seniors.
We don't have wide, I didn't bring.
I'm like, they are, I'm like, yeah, there we go.
All right.
If they're on the edge, I'm able to live on the edge.
It's tiny, though.
I was wondering if they made it to be there.
Your preference.
Okay, people like to leave.
Good job! Dr. Beal, I believe you get that next recognition. Is that right?
News to him.
Dr. Beal was in track.
Yeah. Dr. Beal was, yeah.
I followed it actually during the meet, but I'm not.
Yeah. Miriam Archer is an awesome student. One of our, in our CTE program, we have a number of students who compete in different categories just with Project Fleet the Way. And Miriam, ooh, I just had it, second.
Second in the state and then first in the region.
Second in state and first in the region. I wanted to make sure I got it right. And so she has had the ability to really put Huntley on the map and really connect with other students her age and her grade level and really make an impression and work very hard. Her teachers speak very highly of the work that she does in the classroom and then taking that out to perform and come home with some hardware at the state level has been absolutely amazing. So we want to give a huge round of applause and congratulations to Miriam Archer.
Let's see. Oh, Margaret, you're blocking the camera. I know. Margaret, no. Okay, Sienna, you said no. Okay, one, two, three. Mr. Bibens, I can't see it. There you go. Okay, yeah. That's good. Take the hair and you can. Now I'm blocking your question. Well, you know, you can just. Fire, two. Okay. Got it.
Hi, I'm sorry. One, two, three.
Hi, everyone. We are the Huntley Hurricanes, the district's first Special Olympics team. And we just finished off our first season by attending the state meet. So we had five athletes qualify for the state of Illinois Special Olympics athletics meet. So they actually, it was really cool. There's a bunch of different sports going on. They call it the summer game. So we're wearing our summer game shirts. And so it was athletics, so similar to track and field. We had five athletes who qualified. And four of them went down. One of them unfortunately was sick, so couldn't come compete. So those athletes are Charlie Michelin. He's not, he was not able to go. But we have Luis Martinez, who took fourth place in the softball throw. Luis. Parker Goring took second place in his division softball throw. Chase Goring took fourth place in his division for softball throw. Gabby Ford took second place in her division for the 15-meter run and first place in her division for the softball throw. So we had an amazing time and it was a really great experience, first time down, Special Olympics, first season. And we made it all the way down to state. Mrs. Lombard was able to be there and Ms. Gill was able to be there with us as well for our opening ceremony on Friday night. And it was a really incredible experience. We're really looking forward to the future in the district. So thank you all.
You can come up in the middle.
Hey, you guys can come closer.
Yeah, you guys can come over. Please, please, don't be.
There we go. All right.
Shows so many of the different good things that are going on. All right, moving on to number.
Go ahead.
Unless you have any public comments.
Lead the end.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you all. Grasshoppers.
We keep it all in the west for example.
All right, with that, are there any public comments? So I don't see any public comments, so we can't see it as well. So move to number seven, revision and adoption of the agenda. Does anybody want to comment or make any changes to the agenda? All right, with that, I will make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Quagliano. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passed. Move on to the superintendent's report.
First, I'll go ahead and do a few donations that we received. Want to thank Jimmy Charhaus of Elton, a hundred dollars to the Huntley High School girls' bowling team. And Gerald McRac, seventy dollars to the Huntley High School boys' swimming team. So again, lots of ways that individuals and businesses and organizations continue to support our activities and the things that are going on in the district. And so definitely want to thank them for their donation. And then in the packet, I have a couple. We've got a lot going on in the district right now. It's very quiet in our buildings in a sense of the hustle and bustle of students and things happening in classrooms. However, much going on in both the curriculum and instruction, special education, HR world, O and M out in the buildings. A lot of projects that are going on that we've talked about through our summer work and five-year, well, a lot longer than our five-year planning, but all of those pieces. So just wanted to highlight a few things in terms of strategic planning. It was earlier this month, it was kind of a day and a half. Dr. McCrindall and I had an opportunity through EAE, who is one of our research partners. And they have been really timely on a lot of things over the years. Couple, well, it's 2009, so it was a little while ago. We were able to attend one of their workshops around literacy. More recently, a lot around behavior management and attendance. And those things were kind of a year before, it was almost forceadowing, right? Things to come and really to have been able to partner with, learn from others, not only in the state of Illinois, but across the country. And this last one was in. And this lesson wasn't necessarily a specific topic, but a lot of the things on that first day were takeaways about components of what makes for an effective organization. And Dr. McCrystal and I had an opportunity a few months back to talk with one of their researchers around some of the processes that we do in our district, around our school improvement plans and how that connects to our strategic plan. So it's neat to see this blueprint that they've put together with a lot of the things that we are doing in our district. But one of the components that they really highlighted was that of the strategic plan. And it's really occurred to me in some things just as we think ahead, we're rounding out year five, so we'll be here presenting KPIs around the last year of this strategic planning. But moving forward, what that will look like as we work to create the next iteration of that. And kind of, we talked a lot in the car on the way home about how the great things that we're doing in there are kind of more of a continuous improvement plan. And the things that we're doing on how we continue that as well as take that to the next level of strategic planning for the education for our students in the future. And then that day two focused around AI. And so there were so many takeaways and things. And as much as you think you're on the brink of, hey, this is how we're going to implement some of these things that are going, AI changes. And how, so it was really neat to, how do you set some of those basic stages of that? And so you'll be seeing things here in the future around both of those areas. And probably most, wouldn't say it's most importantly, but one of the first things we want to look at with that strategic plan is to develop a portrait of a graduate. And looking at what does that look like? What do we as the board, educators, staff members, parents, community, we look at our chamber and our business organizations, feel are those characteristics that our students should possess when they walk out the door? And I think a lot of us have those ideas, but we need to get those on paper so that as we are making decisions, as we're building out future KPIs, we've got that graduate that we can look at and visualize at all times to know that the things that we're doing here are preparing them for their future. And so some of that work will probably be happening early fall. And Mrs. Farr and I will be putting together a timeline to bring to the board to talk about what should that look like as we plan for the next rendition of this strategic plan. We've been really busy with various levels on our chronic absenteeism and that attendance campaign. It's interesting when it's a weekend and we're talking back and forth about what could be the slogan, right? So that excitement is around at all the levels of what would be catching, how do we really market this, as well as some of the changes that we've kind of talked about. And so in August, we again will be doing, whether it's at the committee of the whole or the regular board meeting, a very robust presentation around attendance, how that impacts discipline or correlates with that, and then, most importantly, the correlation to academics. Lot of different professional development things that are going on, some with our staff from the building, but a lot of their administrators, administrators hope in the building at the district level on what are our areas of focus for next year and making sure that we all have the tools to be able to be effective leading those from the district level, from the building level, all the way down into our classrooms and preparing for what do those look like? The L and I department have a couple days that they planned out periodically through the month of July, and then we have a full week-long administrative boot camp that all cabinet were working on planning those different days, everything from safety to processes and procedures that may have been tweaked or need to be in the forefront of the paperwork, finance, all of the things. But the majority of that will focus around what is happening in the classroom in L and I and how do we support our students. So more to follow on what those look like, as well as our new teacher and then our returning staff institute days. So it's funny that summer can be quiet and there's a lot going on, but wow, we're at the end of June already. And so August, sorry guys, is going to be here before you know it. But we won't rush it too much. So, but lots going on there. And then, Ms. Altmeier did not have a full update to have, so we threw it online here, but if there are any questions, you can jump in. But good news, last week, the district received notice from ComEd that we'll be receiving yet another additional rebate check in the amount of $63,019 associated with a ComEd electric vehicle rebate program. And if you recall, last month, we did receive through that same program, $300,000 rebate. And so those things will be utilized to offset the local dollars spent on chargers and charger infrastructure. So all that had already been done, this definitely helps to offset those costs. And we should be getting that here in the next week. Any questions on any of those highlights or anything else? Any updates or feedback on these?
All right, thank you, Ms. Lombard. All right, so we will move on to number nine.
I want to share the highlights, and I have a few pictures because I think the pictures will say more than what I can say. One more question. You saw our Special Olympics athletes so amazing. I really wanted to start in gratitude. I want to thank you, the board, our superintendent, Ms. Lombard, our directors of special education, Carrie Breen and Jackie Allen, who really spearheaded the effort to make sure that we had our coaches in line and our program developing our coaches, who did an amazing job bringing our athletes downstate. Their family and their friends for the amount of commitment that they gave to each of these athletes to support this really incredible group of young athletes. And so I just wanted to start in gratitude to everyone who's been a part of this event. It was such an incredible opening ceremony and such a testament to the advocacy that I think everyone really supported and just wanted to share the gratitude I have for everyone. So they were incredible and it was just, there was nothing like it. So it's just important for people to know that the Summer Games, really, there are more than 15,000 participants. In every single way, we did the right work with this group of young athletes, and we really look forward to extending that. So just in gratitude and, yeah, pictures take a thousand words, right? Another highlight we really wanted to share, and I really, you know, all the things. Across the district, we're really proud to share that we have installed seven communication core boards. So you'll see if you take a walk on any of our elementary school playgrounds, we now have a communication core board on every playground. The importance of these boards is really, is profound. We have so many students who seek communication in different ways, and for us to be able to share meaningful inclusion in our community, sometimes it means we need to really normalize communication differences and allow access for students who need to communicate in different ways so they can invite their friends to play and engage. And we're really excited about what this can do. And I really want to acknowledge the advocacy, Deb Ryan, who is one of our AAC facilitators. AAC is Augmented Alternative Communication, right? So she is one of our AAC facilitators across the district, and she really has been advocating for these boards for quite some time. And I think she just asked one more time, was like, what can we do? And really, it's an easy, it's an easy win for us, for our students, for the efforts that we're all trying to make around meaningful inclusion. And just want to, again, share in gratitude to her and to our, you know, our families and students who are advocating, I guess, for the right things for our kiddos. So if you get a chance to walk in the playground, this will be just another added addition. So those are the big highlights, although I did sneak in some pictures of extended school year because we're finishing our third week of ESY and going into our fourth week. So those are my pictures. In addition to those highlights, I just wanted to share with the board, at the last board meeting, we had talked about the consolidated district plan, and as part of that, we do youth funds from our IDEA grant, which is our federal grant to support students in special education. And so I provided the board with some details around some contracts that you'll expect to see in July. The contracts that we are looking at engaging in for this upcoming school year are really centered around professional development, curriculum, and then specifically specially-designed curriculum tools. And so the few that I've highlighted on here are Easter Skills, which we're doing some great work around professional development. We anticipate having them come this summer to do professional development for our staff from all of our paraprofessionals, special educators who work in our self-contained classrooms. They'll be doing structured teaching, so how do we create structured learning environments that are supportive of student learning needs? In addition to Easter Skills doing some work with us for professional development, we will also continue with Infinitech, which is another organization that allows us to use assistive technology to support our students and their very specialized learning needs. And Goalbook, which is a company that allows us to really work on development of IEPs and really writing robust IEPs that help us plan for our students' education. So for curriculum, we're aligned with our KPIs. We're looking at using Unique Learning System as an alternative curriculum for our students with the most extensive learning needs. And so you'll expect to see some things around that. And then first, in our specialized instructional tools, we use Embrace to house all of our software for IEPs, and it helps us make sure that we're keeping up to date and our IEPs are compliant. So those are just some of the things I wanted to make you aware of. We'll have contracts that need to be approved at the July board meeting and...
And Mrs. Gill, those are all things that we've contracted in advance.
Yeah.
Because some of these meets that threshold or above, we want to make sure that we're giving kind of an update. But a lot of the things that are behind the scenes are usually that are out there.
Yeah.
So I thought it was important to just kind of share. None of these are anything new. There may be changes in the amount of licenses or whatnot, but it's the continued great things that have been happening.
Yeah.
Thank you for all that work.
Yeah, yeah. And then just, you know, wanting to provide some updates on the light program development. Obviously, we're really making progress towards finalizing a lease agreement with Visionary Properties. We've been to visit the site and feel really good about the progress that we're making. We hope to bring lease in July, that's what we anticipate. We are working with Mr. Altmeier and making sure that that's really in a good place before we bring it for your approval. But very exciting, if you remember back in November, we agreed that we would purchase a wheelchair-accessible minivan that would be dedicated to the light program, and that will be delivered, it's the first week of July. So I feel like we started with a win on the updates, with a win on the updates, just really felt like this was a great week to share these updates in special education. So thanks for your support on that as well. Any questions?
Yeah, a quick question on the curriculum side of things.
Yeah.
Are we changing the curriculum? Are we looking to try to make it more consistent? Or how would you rate the consistency across the different levels?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So we're looking at aligning our curriculum across the continuum of service for special education. And for our students with the most extensive learning needs who are set on the alternate standards. So we have the Illinois Learning Standards, and then we have the Essential Elements, which is our alternative standard. The curriculum and the curricular tools that we use to support those students is unique and very different than what we use in our general education curriculum. So Unique Learning System is not new to us. We've had it for many years. We've utilized tools from it. What we're looking to do is, A, yes, make it more in alignment so that every teacher who's utilizing Unique Learning System has every tool available to them that they need. And we're working with a group of educators to help roll that out so we can figure out really where is the entry point for each of those educators. So we're really expanding the use of the tools that they already have and providing them with a professional development that they either haven't gotten or haven't gotten in a while, to make sure that we're in alignment and providing the best possible curriculum for our students who really have some most unique learning needs.
And you answered, I think, the second part of the question, which is, you've got that, we're a part of this, we're also helping drive it.
Yeah, yeah. So back in February, when we met with our teachers to get input and feedback on what they were experiencing in the classroom, especially for our self-contained classrooms, we know that that's what they're asking for, is curricular tools and professional development to allow them to deliver that instruction. So we've done a couple pilot studies with Unique Learning System. It is by far the curriculum of choice for our educators. And we have some experts in our district who have been using it for many, many years and allow us to, you know, lean into them, and they're working with us this summer to do some curriculum work, to help us really roll out a professional development plan that will give staff a solid entry point and get them really familiar with utilizing the tool. I think what we discovered is that some of our staff have access and don't necessarily, you know, you don't know what you don't know. So, you know, if we're not teaching staff how to use the tool or how to use the data, you know, we're missing parts of the tools that we really need. So we expect that by fall, we'll have an implementation guide for all of our self-contained teachers who'll be utilizing it, and that will be professional development. And we're really excited about that. Thank you. You're welcome. I just wanted to add, along that same continuum that's happening in the self-contained classrooms, but also with our Co-Top classes and instructional classrooms, the literacy material that we have on consent, we've made sure to prioritize the need to have those accessibility tools for all students who are in our Gen Ed classes as well. And that's something we haven't necessarily focused on. And so with Ms. Gill and that collaboration with Special Services and Curriculum, that's been a focus and something we're going to see coming up with our 612 adoption, which we're going to bring to you guys probably in July or August, some materials that are reviewed. That's something that we have to prioritize because we need to make sure all kids can access the text in our classrooms as well. In the Gen Ed classroom, if you're doing that Co-Top support, instructional classroom, and then all the way down the continuum. So that is a focus that we haven't necessarily always prioritized and something that we've been bringing to you guys over the last couple of months.
And then the professional development will continue through them as well?
Correct, 100%.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Are those core boards at all the elementary?
Everyone of them.
Yes, I walked up there and I'm like, hmm, I'm gonna jump right up there.
Seven of them.
ECC also had one similar, and I think there's, it's been up previously.
Yeah, we installed one at ECC as well.
All right, if there's no other questions, we'll move on to number 10. This DAR is not here, so I will ask, are there any questions about the FOIA request? All right, not seeing any questions. We will move on to number 11. Couple things here in the president's report. So the first thing is attached an article, apparently I'm not allowed to attach an article on it because there's a copyright thing on it, but if you search it up, you can find it on the web. And it's called "Beefflation: How Good Grades in Sideline Parents." So I'm putting this out there, it's kind of a thought for the strategic planning that we're going to start into. And I think this is essentially the review of some polling data around some parents and their views. And most parents view their kids as doing better than expected. We know from the national testing and the state testing that in the schools, most are not actually meeting or exceeding the grades expectations at the grade levels they're at. And that's true for our district as well. So what's interesting here is that parents, and this is really what I want to highlight because I think we need to kind of look at this, is parents judge how their kids are doing by the grades they receive. So that makes sense at a lot of levels. But if the grades aren't matching to what the standards are measuring, we might be, we have a little bit of a skew. And if, I think there's 80 or 90% of the people thought their kids were doing well and exceeding standards, and the answer is actually 45%. We've got a little bit of a tasm there, and I think that's something that our district, we could look at. And I don't want to call it grade inflation, but it might be something around that fact. But I think we're making it potentially easier for parents to say, everything's okay. And I think teachers may be grading on, does this child cause trouble? Does they ask questions? Do they participate? And maybe not as much on the academic side. And I recall when I leave at, when I was growing up, I got three grades. I got an academic grade, I got a behavior grade, and I got an effort grade. I think those three things kind of cover what you're looking for as a student. But I think the academic side, we have to match, because parents are looking at that to do. So I put this out there, I essentially have some discussions... So I put this out there as I essentially have some discussions, but I think we need to think about it on a strategic plan level.
I think one of the things, and it was a focus early on, I'm trying to think it was September or October, at the elementary level, at each one of the buildings, they've kind of taken a topic each month at their PTA or PTO, depending on what organization it is on their campus, where they have a topic to present. And so beginning of the year, it was all around camps and all of those things. One of the pieces that they rolled out was looking at, and with Mrs. Mon, kind of taking the lead, but a team around her, we had developed kind of what are the expectations at each grade level for the various areas? And then revamped the report card. We had been using standards based before, but looking at that specific component. And what does a one mean? What does a two mean? What does a three mean? It's very different than an A, B, C. But it's really honing in on, are they progressing exactly what you were talking about at that specific standard for that grade level? Which would be more accurate in that it's that shift from letter grades to standards, which we have done for a long time with our early elementary piece of that. One of the things that I've, we've got to continue to figure out is how do we get more people there to hear that information? Because there was only a handful. And there were a lot of questions of if I'm seeing this? And then kind of taking the standards-based grading, what does that report card look like and how to interpret that? Along with all of these other pieces? And where can I look to say, as a first grader at this point in the year, where should they be as opposed to in second grade and whatnot? And so I think that is one of our challenges. But it's definitely going to be an area of focus. We've got to arm parents with more of this information so they have that understanding. And I know that there's going to be some things working on at the 612. There's philosophically, there's always going to be differences of, well, we need that letter grade because we need that for colleges and universities. If that's the road you go, or what does that mean for standards? And so we've had those discussions over the years that many of the districts around us and across the nation are having. But Dr. McCrystal, did you want to talk any at all about, you know, kind of, you know, the comments? Or, or?
Yeah, I think we, we started that work in elementary about three years ago, so it was a process. And this is the first year we actually had a row on the report card that does, you cannot get a three unless you are at a certain level. So it's one of 10 standards, right? But then on this one, you can't do that. And that's, I think, our first try. And that's something that we're very cognizant of. We want to support our teachers. Because at the end of the day, when our report card goes out, teachers get the questions. And so we had not had a rubric to back it up and back the answers and that kind of criteria for them to be able to explain that. Ms. Mon, like you said, was a group of teachers helped create, like, these are the assessments we're using. And so it's very, again, this is the first year we really got to use all of it. And so we're interested to pull that back together and follow up with their feedback. I wouldn't have gotten too many questions at my end from parents on that. But we shipped away at it at the elementary level. And like Ms. Lombard said, this is something we definitely need to start that conversation. I think I updated a couple of months ago in the report card and those meta indicators. They are going to include a part that says what percent of students are getting an A or B in certain subjects at certain grade levels. And so this correlation could easily be drawn of if we have 90% getting As and Bs and we're at 55%, you know, meetings, we don't want to, we don't want to send the wrong message. And so that's going to be conversations that we just haven't started at the secondary level. It's something we definitely aren't aware and we need to, we need to tackle.
Yeah, and just, I can just jump in. What's interesting that was in here was that, that the reaction, if you got, say, a four grade to this, for most of the parents, at least in this data, and again, I don't know what reality would be. But the reaction is, we'll start working with their kids and try to get them to be more focused on their schoolwork and the rigor behind it. And I mean, I certainly would want us to go after the teachers. But in some ways, we kind of need to build that, that connection again. And then the parents are helping the students, who's ultimately responsible for their grades, work with the teachers and do better.
I would, I would probably say that this type of a concept that we're talking about probably ties into what you were talking about, that portion of a student. So you're looking at what, what type of person do we want? It's not just reflective of the grades that they get in school. It's reflective of that entire person. So it's, it's an interesting tie-in to that concept. To go back to your, to Dr. McCrystal's point about supporting the teachers, they are the ones that are that first line of defense. And I think traditionally, they haven't always felt like there's been a support for them because they're the ones that get the heat if the student appears on paper that they're not being supported. So I think we have to make it very clear, like we're doing with the attendance policy, that as a board, we're supporting them as well. We're supporting, you know, Ms. Lombard, we're supporting our, our other super attendants to make sure that the staff understands that this is important from a board perspective, too. And they're not on an island by themselves, having to kind of defend everything.
Any other comments or questions? So again, just wanted to bring that up to kind of highlight that we're starting to think about the strategic plan sort of thing, trying to provide that connection. So back, we move to 11.2. We have invited Mr. Amy and Ms. Vutucci here to give us kind of a recap of. She appears. You don't have to come up if you don't want to.
Hi. She begged, she begged that she didn't have to come up. So I pulled her over.
But the intent here is for, to get a view from staff on, on how things went and just to give it to us, to them.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the opportunity to come up here. For those of you that do not know, Ms. Lombard, or not Ms. Lombard, Mrs. Vutucci and I were just re-elected for our sixth term for HGA leadership. People keep on asking me why I do it. And it takes a special type of crazy, and I, I really enjoy it. So I'm looking forward to the next three years of you guys. So, all right. The way that we kind of talked about this as an executive board was trying to talk about what are some strengths that we do here in District 158? And what are some opportunities moving forward? We don't think that even areas of growth were the, the right term. But there are definitely some opportunities that we see that, that we can all work on together in order to, to make this district meet its slogan for all students always. So starting with the strengths, the first one that we, we identified was our leadership at, at the administrative level. We are really, really excited with the relationship that HGA leadership and our District 158 leadership have. We appreciate the openly open communication, the collaboration that we do bi-monthly, if not more often, through phone calls and emails. Our certified staff said that the one biggest strength that we have is that their concerns are listened to. And that is not something that we've always experienced to the highest level. But ever since Ms. Lombard came in, a lot of people have used the words "a breath of fresh air" under your administration. So we do appreciate that. Another thing that has been recognized that we're really excited about is the presence of district administration in the, the buildings. That is absolutely appreciated. And it really does help people gain connections with the district administration. The second thing that we saw with strengths were communication. The weekly District 158 newsletters that go to staff or the monthly ones are, are very much appreciated. They allow people to, to, to get an update of kind of what's going on throughout the district without having to attend the board meetings, although these are very fun. And then the other one is on the union level. I just cannot tell you how much I appreciate the, the level of responses and the timely responses. Usually, if it's one of the executive board that are coming to administration, that means that it's something kind of serious. We, we try to make it that way. And we have always experienced nothing but quick responses within 24 hours. And we do really appreciate that. The third thing that we have as a strength that, that we saw this year, and I feel has been a strength since I've come into leadership, was the committees that we have. We have committees throughout the entire contract that allow collaboration to exist between administration and the certified staff. Not all districts have the amount of committees that we have. But we utilize these committees strategically. And especially the workload analysis, which had been a problem in the past, is going really, really well. That is something that we've talked about. And I think that's on the leadership of Mrs. Gill. And we appreciate that. The last one I have to announce, or that I have to say, and I'll kind of end off on this one, was negotiations. Going back in the year review, we started negotiations earlier than we ever had. I had been around, around for five of them. And I think the one thing that set these negotiations apart was it was very interest-based. We actively listened to each other from the get-go. We might not have agreed on everything, but we had a common goal of trying to retain the best and most qualified staff. And I think that this new contract did that. If we are going to continue to move forward, doing it at that early of, of a stage, we do want to kind of figure out some way, as those new tax dollars come in, to make sure that, you know, that they reflect what, what the district has. By no means do we feel like we were slighted. But we did see those, those numbers, new, new tax dollars come in a lot with a lot more than, than what we were kind of projecting them to. But we're hopeful that with that, those dollars, we can spend that on, on the HESPA as the negotiations are coming up. All certified staff understand and recognize how important the support staff is to making our jobs easy, easier to do. So we, we are hopeful that in the upcoming year, that, that HESPA will be looked at with the same opportunity to be competitive as we were. So we do thank you for all of that. All right, so we're going to move on to the opportunities for growth. The one thing that we, we heard, especially in the elementary, is they would like to see consistency in staff expectations from principals. They want to see things as like PLC expectations, making sure that they're equitable, dress code, things like that. They just don't want to feel like there is a certain building that's doing things completely different than another. So that, that was something you guys have kind of, or I put on this as consistency for student behavior expectations. We think that as we look throughout all three levels, we do feel the need to hold students accountable. At the high school, we have kids that will be missing 20-plus classes, UNVs. And we want to really make sure that we hold those kids accountable because we think as a certified staff that, you know, it's really hard, it should be really hard for a kid to pass if they miss 20-plus days. We will do everything as teachers to, to help them along that, that journey. But when we start seeing things like kids being able to buy detention hours back with MINGA points, I don't know if that's something that, that we want to have moving forward. So that's kind of something that was kind of weary at the high school. At the middle school, we are, it's all about discipline. There's a lot of repetitive occurrences and disrespect of insubordination. And I know that there are times that not, maybe certified staff can't be told, you know, what's, what's happening in all those situations. But the fact that they are repetitive shows that there's, there's that concern and need there. And then at the elementary school, one of the things that, that we have heard was parents are choosing to take in-school times to take vacations. And, and that's really hard for, for certified staff members when a kid is missing multiple weeks of vacation during the school year. And they just want some, some kind of support, maybe in a policy, to, to try to limit that as much as possible. Another area of growth would be professional development. I will say this, it has gotten a lot better in the last few years. I think the one thing that we want is, is more interactive, engaging professional development. And I think that the one thing that teachers want in this district is to the follow-through. We just want to see that what we're doing has meaning and is something that's going to build onto something else. Not saying it hasn't, but I think that that's an opportunity that we can move forward together. Another thing that we heard a lot, actually, was last year, we did the culture of District 158. We had a committee where we had members from volunteers from all different buildings. It was both HESPA and HGA, where we came together and we, we really analyzed a survey that went out to all members asking what do we need to improve on? And those, I was a part of it, and it was one of the, the best committees I, I've been in the part because it was pure collaboration of saying, hey, what can we focus on down to one to two things? And then how can we engage as a certified staff member? How can we gauge each other? How can administration engage those, those concerns that we have? And we only heard good things from every single person in that committee. And it did not move forward into this year. So we would like to see that coming back. And Sandra, am I missing anything? I, I think that's kind of where we are. I hope I didn't speak too much, but you guys asked for, for our honest opinion. And I will say, kind of as I started, we are doing a lot of great things. And I don't think these are bad things. Even the last few things that I said, I think these are just opportunities to collaborate together, all of us as stakeholders, in order to really do what's best for these kids. And like you guys were saying, to get them to a place where we're, we're trying to present this graduate and what they look like.
Great. I have a quick question. And the professional learning, you talk about additional collaboration. Are you talking about amongst your peers or with the administration?
Well, we do have opportunities. Like one thing that we do in the high school that, that we really enjoy is there's, and I think they're starting to do this at the elementary schools as well, is we have teachers that are leading these professional developments. And there's like these different opportunities for you to choose which ones you go to. The elementary's starting to do that. I, I think that we just want to make sure that whatever we're doing, we're, we're getting follow-through on and, and that we're actually having the opportunity to see that that professional development has a purpose behind it. And, and that it's going somewhere to, to benefit not only kids, but the, the development of teachers.
Yeah, like some implementation level.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I have a quick question. Last year, we, we kind of pushed, we renewed the focus on the cell phone policy that's in our handbook. When I was coming in today, the IASBC news feed had five articles about districts that are essentially just banning them, which I think is probably a little bit more, one more step than what is in our policy. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I, I think it would be a really bad idea to ban cell phones. I coach football right now. And for example, I don't use, like, like to use football, but this is just an example of some of the kids that are in our district. They don't have access to a laptop at home, and their Chromebooks don't necessarily work. And I do see a lot of teachers allowing kids to use cell phones in a positive manner, so whether it be review games or whether it be. So I think this year went really well when it came to, to step in the right direction. A lot of these, a lot of teachers had these phone trees that they had, had the kids come up and, and use. So that was really, really positive. Did become lackadaisical as we moved on throughout the year, yes. But I, I think that there was a renewed sense, at least at the high school, halfway through the year, to, to kind of re-engage that policy back. And, and I'll tell you, from what I saw in my classroom, it has been, it was the best it ever had. And it was kind of like what the middle schools do with lining up at the doors during class periods. When the kids come to, as freshmen, we don't, if we're not in our classroom, we don't have to like see a, a huge hallway barrier. They actually sit in the sides. And I think cell phones, if we continue this next few years, will, will become that. So that's kind of where I am. And Sandra's here, so she has something to say.
I, I am one of the teachers. I am one of the teachers who actually uses and utilizes phones in my classroom pretty often. I have a, I teach, I'm an art teacher. And so a lot of times, in order for students to take pictures of their work and post them on our Artsonia platform, their phones are a much better option than their Chromebooks. The, the quality of their Chromebook camera is just not where it would be in phones, on their phones. And so as far as the middle school goes, I agree with the policy. Generally, using phones in the classroom is not a good idea. We saw a marked improvement this year. And most teachers did not have phones out, and it wasn't so much of an issue unless they were allowed to bring them and they knew it. I think they were pretty respectful of the policy. So I would be concerned in getting rid of them entirely because I feel like we'd be taking some of those opportunities away from students. But the policy where, in general, unless they're approved and it's a approved educational use, worked really well for us.
That's, that's very good feedback. So I appreciate that. Because it sounds like, sorry, the, the policy in general worked pretty well. It reduced pressure on it. But in certain cases, teachers should have flexibility to use it as an educational tool.
And I think that both of the, well, there was a discussion and once Mrs. Helfer is on board, having some communication, conversation between our two middle schools. First of all, there is the talk about, right, in a classroom, that it's not unless it is something directed by the teacher and those have gotten better, of what about in the lunchroom or things like that? And so there, there's, those conversations have already started. Which again, if, if it becomes an issue and it's disruptive or it turns into behavior concerns, so those are some things that I know the high school is not talking about there because the kids have been, you know, pretty good with. been pretty good with responsible, but those conversations about what does that look like during the lunchtime is something that the junior school principals will be concerned about.
I just had a question to you. So a couple, most of the opportunities that you were talking about don't deal necessarily with the learning environment, it's more the things that lead to that learning environment. So you're talking about accountability, behavior, discipline, attendance, and a lot of that is covered under our policy that we're responsible for. So knowing what we've done with the cell phone policy and knowing that we're helping to enforce it and hopefully the staff is helping to enforce it, I think when we start the campaign for dealing with some of the things that came out of the PTAP with attendance and policy, I think it's going to be essential for the staff to understand that we need that push from you as well. Like, the expectation is for the students and parents to follow that handbook, but we also need the staff to follow it as well and raise those concerns. We can't just push everything under the rug. And I think there's a lot of things that we've learned from enforcing the cell phone policy that we can use positively with this campaign. So it'll be interesting to see next year, maybe at this time, the feedback that we get from that. Hopefully it kind of leads us down that road. And I don't think that we're naive enough to assume that it's going to be easy to address these things, but when I look at these opportunities, we can put this into place and it's successful, it's going to start to mitigate some of those problems that are taking away from the learning environment that the teacher should have with those students.
Yeah, and I do think it's really important to understand, especially at the high school, we're talking about a very small handful of kids that are using that privilege. I would say 95% of the kids, if not more, are doing what they should, but I think that if we are able to hold those that are doing the wrong thing accountable, then others won't be more likely to take that on.
People follow leaders.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I really want to hone in on the discipline accountability piece and the role between the building admin, the principals, the deans versus the teachers. And you, is there, I mean, I perceive that there's always inconsistency and various issues related to that, and I perceive that as one of the bigger problems right now that we might have.
I don't know.
And I may be wrong about that, I'm just...
No. You know, you're talking to someone who, I don't tend to have a lot of disciplinary issues in my classroom personally because I deal with the relationship piece and I take care of them on my own. But I will say what we're hearing at the high school is maybe a consistency, maybe one dean is a little bit more to the handbook than another, and maybe we need consistency on that level. But I would say that, yeah, we definitely need to hone in on students' absences and trying to kind of figure that out because another thing that we also have to, you know, that just came to my head also is the cheating policy, and if a kid is caught cheating on a test, you know, you have to say that they automatically, their first concern is going to remediation to get a seven percent. I don't know if that resonates, but sends the right message as well. So just kind of something to think about on that side too. But you're always going to have inconsistencies because being a dean is subjective, you know, but they should abide by the policy, but some deans are more relationship-based and they want to have a conversation where some will just go straight to the discipline. So I think that if we get PD in that area, that should help out the issue as well.
I mean, concerning one of the things that we talked about last time, I put it as an action item, but in all of the handbook is that behavior matrix that many people had a hand in doing. And so I think that utilization of that, and as we're going through, kind of needs to be the blend of both the teachable moment as well as the consequence and how do we marry the two, and it might vary a little bit on the student base of the needs that they have, but that will help guide, adhere to kind of the range that we need to be in. But also with, at the elementary level, with Dr. Hoyou, and then at the secondary level with Mrs. Spears, having regular meetings with the administrators on that. We had regular, there's a committee at both levels to kind of calibrate, if you will. We calibrate writing, we calibrate the ways that we have rubrics for various things so that if, well, not just rubric, we're consistent on that in the academic side, to have those kind of conversations to look at what are we seeing, how are we handling those situations? And when I say regular, those are kind of monthly meetings, I think is what's planned for next year, to be able to look at that. So at the middle school, are we handling similar behaviors with similar students the same way? If not, let's talk about that so that consistency gets better. And then, you know, at the high school, mainly with the dean, but you know, with any of the administrators to have those conversations. So I think that that's right, it's PD with that and how are we doing, what are we utilizing? And we might be here next year at this time tweaking that matrix based on interventions or consequences and things like that. And so that's exactly why that matrix was kind of put together. I think the things are in policy and are in the handbook. We want to make sure people are all doing great things with great intentions, but if we're having differences in that, it might send different messages to students and staff, right? And so that is a big push that we will be utilizing this year and trying to implement.
Thanks, Vanessa Lombard. Part of the PTAP conversation that happened was also for our students that might have IP to type of forums, et cetera, that consistency and what does that look like? That's part of the conversations as well, that we have plans moving forward, are we approaching students in the appropriate way and making sure we have our special services, coordinators, et cetera, at the table to have those as well? So it's not just, you know, we can't apply the same type of process all the time, but we need to make the right exceptions when needed and aligning. So definitely a growth area that we're planning for next year.
But, and I also think it's powerful right now that we're having this conversation, the fact that we have all different stakeholders coming together to try to correct things that we can correct, and I think that it's going to take all stakeholders, it's going to take student buy-in, it's going to take parents being consistent with the policy that's there. It's not just the people in front of me right now, it's us as teachers taking responsibility to do that and all the other stakeholders, and we definitely recognize that, and I would speak on behalf of a majority of my membership, a high majority of my membership, when we were saying that we're ready to take that on.
They'll see more, just as we have more data out there, a lot of that data that's presented to teachers is the academic data, but let's look at all of these because some of it is, when we don't have the information, we don't see what's happening, we make assumptions. We have, you know, based on what we're seeing in our classroom or next door, and so not only is it just the academic, it's going to be the attendance, it's going to be behavior, and so regardless of those levels, where it's presented, whether it's a whole staff meeting or PLCs or whatnot, that will be shared on a regular basis, one, so staff are aware of what the data looks like in all these areas, but two, can give feedback on a regular basis, so we're not waiting again until this time next year to say, how did it go? Because we need to tweak things in October, we need to tweak things in October. So staff will have more of that from that stakeholder vantage point of seeing and hearing and being able to share. I think the more opportunities they have, more people will be comfortable to ask questions or try to collaborate at the table.
And I do think that just a simple follow-through of here's kind of what happened. I know it's impossible to ask the deans to do that with every student, but there are some times where there's some frustrations where the teachers put in their disciplinary and then they just don't know where it went from there. And I think that that would be a huge help as well.
Any other questions for Mr. Ed? Thank you so much for coming, you're giving your feedback. We'll have you back in a couple more. All right, with that, we'll move to the consent agenda. All right, so any commentary on the consent agenda before we move it forward? All right, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the tentative draft number 12 as written in the agenda here, all the way through 1215. Ready to go through this second?
You don't mind? Whoever.
All right, so with that, can I have a roll call?
Mr. Pittman.
Yes.
Mr. Cuadrano.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Crady.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
All right, with that, the consent agenda passes 7-0. We move on to number 13, action items. 13.1 is the HR personnel. Dr. Spears, do you have any commentary?
I don't have anything to add.
Recommendation here, I'll make a motion to approve 13.1 as presented. Thank you, Mr. Crady. I have a roll call.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Cuadrano.
Yes.
Mr. Pittman.
Yes.
Mr. Crady.
Yes.
All right, with that, the session 7-0, we move on to 13.2, the tentative draft of the FY '25 budget call wire.
Thank you very much. I'm extremely pleased to present the tentative draft, the second draft of the budget. The first draft of the budget was presented in April. The very good news is, well, we're almost halfway done with this process after tonight because we'll present the budget, the display draft budget in August with final draft being displayed in September. That being said, there is a lot of adjustments that are still coming down the pipeline. So one thing is for sure is this will change as the second or the first draft changed from this draft, but we'll update you, and I figured rather than go through these 60 pages of detail, I promised you some visuals. So we'll walk through a presentation. I do have a lot of slides, I'll try to fly through a lot of them, but the intent here is to really show you the budget from a visual perspective, and along the way we'll jump into some assumptions and some of the things that are driving the budget, but we'll also give you some insight into some historical numbers and why we're making some of the decisions we're making such as unhealthy sharing. So I always start with this, I'll look at the screen, it doesn't work here. DD, I thought it was you, but it's really not you. I think it's, I don't know here, give me a second.
Is this with Floyd to get us more money than the technology budget?
I don't know. No, I am due for a laptop though, by the way, so that could be part of the problem here. I always start with pictures of our kids because the budget process of allocating resources is about all students always, and everything we do, well, we're investing in our students, we are investing in our community, we're investing in our students' future, which is why we're doing what we're doing here. So I do like to start with pictures of the kids and enhance what DD shared and certainly enhance having the kids here, the tracking here and all the other student recognition. Well, that's why we're here and that's why this budget is so important. We guide the budget through, well, our strategic plan, and as part of our strategic plan, one of the goals is that the district remains sustainable to meet the needs of the students and community and allocate resources effectively and efficiently so that we can live with our mission of all students always. Within this presentation, I just want to give you a really big picture, operating results view of where we're at. We'll talk about the modifications from the last draft, we'll talk about revenues and expenses at a glance, and we'll jump into risks and ultimately the approval of the Board of the tentative draft. So at a very high level, we're currently, the tentative draft is budgeting $135.5 million of revenue with $134 million in expenses, leaving an operating surplus of $1.5 million. And we'll talk about the changes from the last draft in this next slide. So we did have some very material changes, and we talked about these the last time we presented the draft in April, right? Our two big ones up top are on the revenue side, interest earnings and impact fees, and we have a slide later in the presentation to kind of outline those, but with where the economy is, the current budget or the budget of draft one with $1 million for interest earnings, we're currently trending for FY '24 at $2 million. So if interest rates stay the same throughout next year, we should maybe be able to get to 2 million, but we won't know that for sure until, well, we get to year end and we place the majority of our mature investments, our long-term investments, as monies are coming in from property taxes through September, when those monies come in and we place those long-term, that's when we'll know if we can hit that $2 million mark. So by September, we might know if there's going to be another adjustment for interest earnings, either positively or negatively. Impact fees, we're also trending very high, and we thought it'd be prudent to increase that because the likelihood, there is a high likelihood with the residential property developments we have that that impact fees will be, again, higher by $5,000. Again, we have slides on that moving forward. On the expenses side, we had some unfavorable adjustments. As we're starting to wrap up year end, we can see where we're trending on extra duty and substitute teaching. On extra duty, what's really driving that line item are really two things, internal subbing and overloads, right? And because we have a lot, we've had a lot of staff this year on long-term leave, we've got a lot of staff not showing up obviously for substitute teaching driving that line item, but on internal subbing, it's really teachers stepping in so that we don't have to always do overloads. And so sometimes classes use multiple teachers versus one overload teacher, but we are expecting that to continue a little bit, and so we added another $110,000 to the extra duty line. On the substitute teaching line, that line item has historically been between $750 and up to $850,000. And that's what we've historically budgeted. The last two years, last year ending fiscal year '23, substitute teaching, that line item was $1.1 million in expenses. And we weren't really sure at that time if that was a blip post-COVID, or if we were gonna, we were hoping that would come down a little bit, but where we're trending today is again, $1.1 million. So what this additional $250,000 does is bring up that $850,000 budget to the $1.1 million. Now, why do I also feel comfortable about that? When you look at our substitute teaching daily rate, that daily rate was $95 back in 2019. It is going to be $140 in fiscal year '25, that's a 47% increase. This is not a 47% increase, so that's the good news on the side note, but it's also in the case that one of the reasons we do need to increase this line item is because of the, over the years, the increasing sub-rate. Other adjustments were TRS expense, we just adjusted that to where we expected to be based on trended actuals with the additional salary increases as noted in the last draft. We have a workman's comp and property and liability insurance adjustment, that's a favorable adjustment because we did receive final rates for workman's comp and property and liability insurance. We had favorable rates on the property and liability insurance side and slightly unfavorable on the workman's comp. Net, in total, we had $46,000 of favorability to the actual premiums, so that's good news. Where we're trending on the electric, we talked about that in one of the last meetings, we're reducing that line item budget from $800,000 to $750,000. And the teacher contracted line, contracted services, if you recall, last year we budgeted approximately $600,000. We're currently trending at about $600,000 for the current year, but working with Special Ed and Mrs. Gill, we think we can reduce that, and we're currently reducing that line item by $200,000. And we'll again look at that in September when we get closer to finalizing the budget to see if we need to true that number up. So those are the material adjustments from draft one. At a very high level, I just thought I'd share revenues at a glance, give you a high level view. Of course, there's property taxes, other local revenue is primarily going from right to left, other local revenue is primarily food services revenue, interest earnings, CPPRT and things of that nature. Evidence-based funding, that is purely the evidence-based funding formula from the state. Other state revenue are primarily two things, those are categorical reimbursements, that would be the transportation reimbursement as well as the private facility reimbursement, and federal revenue primarily consists of Medicaid, title grants, the IDEA Part B grants, as well as national school lunch. That gives you a high level view of what the revenues consist of. Revenues at a glance, this is all part of your budget packet, but I will cover a few of these. Local revenues are expected to increase $5.1 million, primarily driven by levy dollars as well as interest earnings of $500,000, which we just talked about. State revenues are currently only budgeted to increase $2.8 million, and the $2.8 million is the increase that we received from the allocation of the $350 million last year that the state allocated, and we are still expecting to be in tier one, and we still are expecting to receive an amount similar to that $2.8, $2 million. That being said, that is a risk, a little bit of a risk, because the state, although the state has budgeted $350 million to be set aside, the evidence-based funding formula is not yet final, probably will not be released till late July. So that's one of those adjustments that are still coming down the pipeline, as well as the transportation and private facility reimbursements. A lot of change in federal revenue, primarily decreasing because of the decrease in available ESR and R dollars as those two grants, federal grants are no longer available to us. And Medicaid reimbursement, we talked... And Medicaid reimbursement, we talked about that several times, that's decreasing two hundred thousand due to the revised funding formula. We'll skip by this, but this is a nice graph that we'll share next time. Thought I'd share this, impact fees by years, right? So this really is an indication of, of new construction within our taxing district. And over the years, you can see from twenty twenty to even during the COVID years, we were selling a lot of homes because the majority of this new construction is residential property. And last year in twenty twenty four, right, I should say, in the current year of twenty twenty four, we've already hit one point four five two million, that's where we're trending. We might end up a little higher depending upon what comes in at year end, but that's currently where we are. But we do feel at this time that it's prudent to budget at least eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We do have some developments such as Calamore that aren't, well, they're not as big as they used to be and they're not selling as many homes, but we do have a few other new developments that, you know, have been driving that one point four two million in twenty twenty four. So I did want to share that. Interest earnings by year, you can see during the COVID years, right, when we were literally earning just a few basis points on the dollar, it's, it's really hard to fathom that you have an average cash balance of twenty five plus million dollars, but you really can't generate any interest earnings because, well, there was none to be had in the market. But over the last few years, with the economy kind of doing what it's doing, it has been a really good revenue source for the district and certainly we hope that continues for everybody. So wanted to share that as well. On the expenditure side, salaries and benefits, approximately seventy eight percent of our spend, I think we all know that. Purchased services, I do have some notes on some of these, so I do want to share some of these specific to the budget. I'm down a roll for this slide. Okay, thank you. Salaries and benefits, approximately seventy eight percent of this year's budget. Within benefits, health insurance, approximately fourteen point two million or approximately ten point six percent of the overall budget. There is a slide on health insurance and we'll talk about that a little more on a later slide. Purchased service includes, purchased services includes items such as contracted transportation, five hundred thousand, contracted studio, two point three five million, snow removal, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, property and liability and workman's comp insurance, approximately one point one million, banking fees, legal fees, et cetera. Those are the purchase service line items. Supplies and materials include, well, primarily instructional supplies, but also include major items such as technology inventory, the purchase of Chromebooks and laptops, and that's over one million dollars this year. Curriculum and instructional supplies, natural gas and electric, natural gas and electric, one point one million, transportation fuel, diesel, propane, approximately five hundred and fifty, six hundred thousand dollars, as well as cafe food for food services, that several million, approximately two to two point five million, I believe. So those are the major line items within supplies and material. And capital projects followed by other objects, and other objects primarily include special education, private tuition and room and board, if we have any students that need room and board, currently only private tuition. Next slide, this is, this is health insurance. This is health insurance from two thousand and nineteen forward. You'll see two green bars, that's the twenty twenty four budget and where we're currently trending for the twenty twenty four budget, okay? So you can see and we've talked every month that we're trending significantly over budget for twenty twenty four, and I also show you the twenty twenty five budget. What I really want to share though is back in twenty twenty, well, the expense of approximately eight point five million approximated only eight point one percent of the overall spend of the district. Well, it's now at ten point six, right? And it's been increasing a little bit over the years, well, because number one, we've got a lot of large claims in the pipeline. Unfortunately, we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of sick people that have some very large claims that are driving some of this, but we don't want to lose sight that, well, we did have a, through FY twenty one through FY twenty four, we did have a contract change which did kind of uptick some of these numbers a little bit. So that is also part of the reason for, for some of the increase in expense from twenty two to twenty three as well. So I did want to just share that with the board, kind of a history of health insurance expense. And we'll continue to work with the team to make sure that while we can keep our employees as healthy as possible, because that's what we need to do here. Expenses at a glance, on the expense side, salaries and benefits are expected to increase approximately seven point five million dollars. Increases approximately four point six million of that benefits, we've already talked about, increasing, are increasing by two point five million, of which one point nine million is health insurance and the other part of that is payroll taxes as well as CRF and IMR related to increased salaries. Purchased services are expected to increase by five hundred and sixty thousand within the tentative draft. A big part of that is, well, two things, it's decreasing primarily because of ARF and ARF expenses of three hundred and five thousand that are going away, onetime expenses, and a decrease in instructional contracted services, which we talked about, of two hundred thousand dollars. Supplies and materials are expected to increase by three hundred and thirty one thousand dollars. There is the ARF impact of a negative hundred and eighty thousand. We decreased electric by fifty thousand, but we do have an increase in curriculum new adoption of five hundred thousand dollars. So if you recall, last year, FY twenty four budget is a million dollars for new adoption. We're not using all of that money this year, there's some timing issues there. That combined with the new adoption of literacy that we have to do next year is requiring or is putting us in a position where we need, they have new adoption money of one point five million dollars, and that's what we estimate it to be, so that's why that adjustment is there. Capital outlay is expected to actually decrease by eight hundred thousand to three point four eight million. Primarily, primary projects include the asphalt improvements, new carpeting in various buildings. I do believe, no, we're done with roof replacement this year.
This last?
Yeah, this last year, so that's, that's currently a budget. As well as additional buses, but this line item will be adjusted. We're waiting for final numbers from transportation, we do have that. They need six buses next year, but what we're still waiting on is an estimate, just a quote, we're not going out to bid yet, but a quote on what we think propane buses are going for today in today's market right now for next year and/or diesel buses so that we can better adjust that one point one million that is currently budgeted in transportation. Another future adjustment coming down the pipeline. I thought I'd give you capital expenditures over, over the period of time from two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty nine. So right there in the middle is where we're currently standing at four point two million dollars for the current year, FY twenty four. You can see the decrease to FY twenty five. And the numbers in twenty six point seven, twenty eight, twenty nine include bus purchases but also tied to Mr. Ray Conch's maintenance plan. So you can see over the years, well, overall capital expenditures are coming down for the district. And a lot of these numbers are coming down because, well, we did a lot of major things to the building such as roof replacements over the years, and those are no longer part of those out-year capital expenditures that we anticipate. So good news on the capital expenditure front in the out-years. And I did want to end with a few slides on debt service, although when we pass the budget, right, we always talk about the operating budget, right? The operating budget does not include the debt service fund, it does not include the capital project fund, but primarily the debt service fund. And what I do really want to note is what I'm sharing here is two different charts outlining, well, what our debt structure is going to look like for the next ten years or so, okay? And we've restructured our debt to, well, have a downtick in levy year twenty four. So the chart you see off to the right and to the left are by levy here. So when we levy for property taxes, this is a really important number to understand what is happening to our debt because historically we have increased our debt by three point five percent each and every year for the last approximate ten years, okay? We structured it that way so that we can manage it and manage expectations with our community, but we decided on this last round of restructuring to bring it down in twenty four because, well, we knew that we were going to have some significant, we knew the economy was raging, we knew the consumer price index was very high, and we had an opportunity to bring it down to help our community in the out-years and also help our community by keeping our debt relatively flat for the next ten years until we have final payoff in two thousand and thirty four. So that's important because if you look at CPI by levy year, this is the amount that we've asked essentially the board to approve on an annual basis, is the amount for which we would pass along to our taxpayers, their share of supporting us in education. So these are the CPI amounts, as you can see in twenty two and twenty three, well, I highlighted those red because those really don't reflect CPI. CPI was higher in those years, but that was the maximum rate allowed by PTEL, the property tax extension law limitation. But as we all know, over the years, we've done a lot of abatements. We've done a lot of abatements and a lot of things to minimize the impact to our taxpayers that was a period of time that, well, we kept taxes completely flat and then the subsequent six years, we abated four hundred thousand dollars for six straight years. And over those years from two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and eighteen, those were four of those years, we reduced, right, the impact to the community of what you see on this page to this page. So this is essentially what the impact is to a residential taxpayer year over year. And you can see in twenty two, levy year twenty two and levy year twenty three, we brought the impact from that five percent down to four point one two, and this past levy year with the one point one million dollar of abatement, we lowered that impact down to three point six five. The other point I wanted to make from the decline in debt here, next year we have a one point nine million dollar decline in debt, which is going to be very favorable for our community because we're going to be able to lower the impact of that three point four percent CPI that ask, if you will, to two point one four percent. I did want to share that, that when, when folks are looking at this, that they understand all the pieces, not just necessarily the operating side. I think this is a very important component for our taxpayers to understand along with the budget process. And with that, I will open it up for questions and, and I'll also ask for the recommendation for the board to approve administration's recommendation that they approve the FY twenty five tentative budget with operating revenues of one hundred and thirty five point five million, operating expenses of one hundred and thirty four million, with an operating surplus of one point five one seven million. I open it up for questions.
One item, if you could clarify for everybody, on the impact fees that are up significantly, that's a capital, goes into our capital funds, is to be utilized for capital projects by law?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't know if any of that, that's not the transition fee piece, the transition fees can go in our.
Correct. The, the slide doesn't include for the current year, some transition fees, which we talked about at the last meeting, there's approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're going to be allocating back to the education fund. But yes, impact fees are there for a purpose, right? They're there to support future construction, which is why they go into Fund Sixty and outline by state code.
Why wouldn't we take the surplus and just give it back to taxpayers? Then it'd be at zero percent.
Well, I think that is a, that would certainly be a discussion that we can have when we present the levy in November and December of this year.
Is there another way to do that as well to potentially take the surplus and reduce the debt, which would potentially eliminate? I know we don't pay a lot of interest, but is there another option to consider as well that might also benefit taxpayers a little bit for longer term?
Yeah, we currently don't have an option to pay down debt like you can pay down your mortgage. That option really doesn't exist in the bipolar world. But there's always an opportunity to use the operating surplus as future abatement. There is. But I would also caution that just a little bit because, you know, we do have a fund balance reserve policy and that fund balance reserve policy is twenty five percent. And we're floating at about thirty percent. But what that really also means is every year that we increase our operating expenses or increase our operating revenues, when we increase our operating revenues, four million dollars, because this is easy math, technically we should be trying to budget a one million dollar surplus so that we can continuously be setting aside twenty five percent of our reserve, right? And at one point five million dollars, that current operating surplus does not represent, or it's really close to representing twenty five percent of the increase in operating expenses that the district has. And we have that twenty five percent reserve because I think as we all know, we receive, we pay, we pay and receive our property taxes in the months of June and September. So the majority of the revenue that the district does receive does come in in those months. And we do receive state funding throughout the year, but in an effort, and this is really kind of a state, state policy, in an effort so that school districts don't run out of cash, right, so that they don't have to issue tax anticipation warrants, so that they can make payroll in the months of April and May, that's why they suggest, highly suggest that all school districts maintain a twenty five percent fund balance policy. When I came to the district back in two thousand and nine, we were floating somewhere around sixteen or eighteen percent and we were managing money in the months of April and May just to make payroll because we didn't want to issue tax anticipation warrants because with tax anticipation warrants, we have to spend a lot of, well, interest expense to receive those, and we certainly didn't want to do that. So over the years, we've been able to build up our reserve balance to where it is today. And I would caution using our surplus each and every year to do great things for taxpayers, no doubt, but to put us in a situation where we may, we don't want to get too close to that twenty five percent because each and every year, if we don't set that percentage aside from the increase in revenues, we will fall below twenty five percent. And over the past few years, we have been eating into our fund balance just simply because we're not, we're not budgeting a high enough surplus.
In the, the, in this year, FY twenty five budget is the light investment included in that or any large, other large investment?
If you're asking if the costs associated with the light program, the increased light were things that we're doing?
I don't, I don't know how much, I don't, I don't know what the capital outlay is for that, but I assume there's some money they have to put into it?
Some money, but I do believe that talking with Ms. Gill, it's within her budget.
Okay. Within, it's in this budget.
It's within this budget.
And, and the out-years, it, what does it assume for enrollment and staff at team?
In the out-years, we're still working as a cabinet team and we've met, you know, on several occasions on this, planning what those adjustments are going to look like in the out-years. So when you, when you look at fiscal year twenty nine in UCA, I recall a two point five million dollar deficit, that still needs to be addressed through enrollment and reductions and headcount reduction.
None of that's been.
None of that is been told in the out-years, yes.
I understand that.
I believe there will also be some changes in the instructional as we, in the past, that budget has kind of carried through with the same amount, but looking at some of the, I don't want to say property, but we had to make some changes with the literacy. Those things will offset and that will definitely decrease what are some of the needs in those out-years where it's going to be a little bit tighter. Those will be reflective, we're trying to fine tune that right now so that in that expedition, we will have that a little bit more effectively.
Fine tune.
And I guess, I also, I don't want to take away from the fact that you guys have done a good job on this budget. If people want to go look at the budget and look at the numbers that increased on salary line items, we are clearly increasing the amount we are paying to the people who are actually educating our students. So there was a huge thing, there were a lot of people who didn't think we could afford it. You guys have done a very good job in incorporating that and a net three point one four percent increase in the next year for taxpayers, depending on how their house is assessed because I know I didn't get three point four, I got a little bit higher than that, but.
Because you're, it's because your EAB increased higher than the average this way.
Those unrealized gains.
Yes, exactly. Hundred percent. I was there with you.
So I don't want to take away from that, there's a lot of good things going on in this and you can see it in the budget that we're able to do that. I sit there and like Mr. Amy, I look at that big surplus and I say, well, okay, taxpayers did get kind of hit the last couple of years, maybe we need to give less than two percent to that, and I guess that's for the board to consider. I don't know what I'm thinking, we have a million and a half dollars there, we need to think about it.
Well, what I would tell you is you would never, ever in a million years, or shouldn't even think about. or shouldn't even think about looking at projected budget surpluses. You only work off of actually what occurred. So, and that's what we've always done, is we, you let the year play out. You just saw that, I mean, this past year, we'll be significantly over budget on health insurance. And the only thing that's buffering us from even being remotely close to breakeven is going to be the increased interest earnings and one or two other positive income items. But we have some negative income items also that are affecting, that this curve here, we're just going to finish. So what I would tell you is, you know, the past, we've chosen over a long period of time, we, you know, where we were abating from is from surplus fund balances from prior years, okay? And that's, that's when you can afford to look at, think about doing it. And I've, we've done it, and we should continue to absolutely look at it if that, if it's available. But I would not, I would never forward, look at, okay, we were projecting one and a half million dollar surplus and think that that's gold because that, that could be easily zero by the time we, at this time next year, depending on what transpires. We could have health insurance be not so good, you could have interest rates turn down where the budgeted interest isn't anywhere near what it is this year. There are, there are many factors in it, but I agree. I, I was concerned when we did the HAA contract, whether this first year, I felt comfortable enough, we'd probably be okay. And I'm, I'm, right now, I'm pleasantly surprised that we're seemingly okay. It's a big number, a big hill to climb here on it. But, you know, I think the biggest favorable thing that occurred that I, you know, I don't think, Strohmeyer, you saw coming was the amount of EBF increase that we get that that kind of came out of, it kind of came out of nowhere.
Came out of nowhere. There were a lot of surprises. A lot of school districts went from tier one to tier three.
Right.
And received little to no funding. Rockford was one of those districts primarily because of the amount of CPPRT they received. And so we know that, you know, CPPRT did come back about 25% this year, but still trending to a point where the numbers they are using for EBF will still probably put them, for instance, in a tier three position. And all those excess dollars from districts moving down to tier three is what enabled us to get more money in tier one because there was a more, a bigger available pool of money in the tier one group. So that was, that was one thing. And then the, obviously, the economy and interest earnings might be another. I think what Mr. Ani is referring to is the new construction dollars, right? Because new construction was estimated on, from a preliminary standpoint, remember, while we were looking at the preliminary levy, I believe, to be 24 million, and it came in at 31 million. Now, there was a $7 million flip that came through from McHenry and Kane County, primarily in McHenry County.
But that, that just translates into a quarter million dollars.
Yeah, that's 300, $400,000 a year is what that translates to here. Correct.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not that it's nothing, but it's.
Yeah.
With a margin of.
But I think it's combination from all of those things that we're seeing, right?
Right.
Even impact fees. And I think where we are with impact fees, managed returns, and just a lot of really good things have been happening this last year with the economy driving some of these line items. And we hope to continue. There are also big risks for the district that, that if we start to rely on interest earnings of a million a year or two million a year, or impact fees of a million a year, and all of a sudden, the economy goes south and the real estate market goes south, those are some big line items that, that take a big chunk out of the revenue stream.
All that.
Well, we.
I miss saying a lot of revenue. We got a lot of it.
Yeah. But we still have our.
Yeah.
Contractual commitment of certain increase levels that are going to occur regardless. So that's part of it. That's what I'm saying. You can't get too far ahead of yourself ever on any of this stuff. Let this stuff play out, you work up on what you have in your pocket, and you can manage off of that as far as how you want to manage the tax rate. And, you know, obviously, we've tried to do that virtually every year, the last three, four years.
Yeah. And then break this, yeah.
Yep.
Insurance costs? So who's our provider, refresh my memory?
Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Okay, contractors open?
Well, we, we look at them every year when we go through opening enrollment. We work with our alliance broker, and we understand, you know, we use Blue Cross Blue Shield not only for medical claims, third-party services. We use them for Prime RX, and we also use them for our stop loss, single stop loss as well as the aggregate stop loss. But they provide a package deal, but historically, when we have looked to the outside, the rates we are getting on our stop loss are primarily really, really good with Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Compared to, what's with pool? We've talked about the pool concept. So is pool being contemplated into this budget as an option?
No, we certainly can look at a pool. The best time to enter a pool, Nyheth, Northern Illinois Health Insurance Plan, a lot of school districts are part of that plan. The best time to get into a pool is when you're performing very well, right? We've got a lot of large claimants in our pipeline, and they will look at that and certainly make that decision as to whether or not we're invited to that pool. And it'll also dictate our rates. So yes, we can, it'll help us keep our rates relatively flat, but it doesn't guarantee us that we will be better off.
I am interested in understanding what it would look like. And I would also, I would like to understand what Blue Cross is doing to help us mitigate some of these claims. And I understand that we have a subset of claimants that are producing a large volume. The volume isn't there, it's, it's, there's claimants with large amounts. But what are they suggesting that we do and what plans do they have in place for us to start to address it? Because we can't just keep going with the, well, people put off care during COVID. We're, we're very much past that now. So hopefully, people have started to take better care of themselves. So what are their suggestions for how we mitigate some, some of the issues that we're having? And what do they plan for us to do going forward? Because we can't just keep using the excuse of, well, we have, we have large claims. Yeah, everybody has large claims, but what's being done to address that?
Well, that's what stop loss stuff is for.
But we have, we have, I mean, the proactive stuff, doctors there, I know you, I mean, we have the screening, and that, that, I mean, you can address some of those concerns that way.
Yeah, we have the screening for, for our employees who are on the health insurance plan. I'll actually be bringing that agreement at the July board meeting over Northwestern. So that's part of it, but also part of this too, on those screenings, just to note it's for our employees on the plan, but not for the dependents. And some of these large claims are not just our employees, but dependents that are on the plan also.
So we do have a health insurance committee for which the brokers come out, and we do have opportunities to talk of Blue Cross Blue Shield as well. And a lot of times, you know, their answer is, is this, well, we need to look at your benefits. You need to reduce the amount of benefits that you're providing your employees. And usually, that doesn't go over too well. That's called disruption, significant disruption. And we do have union representatives that are part of that health insurance committee as well. And so, and we have a board member who's on that committee, which I would also encourage, if we could have another board member join on that committee. We've asked Andy to attend a few meetings. So that we can all be on the same page, right? I mean, this is a tough one. This is not an easy answer. This is not, let's go from self-insured to premium. That, that's not, that's not a solution at this point in time. It may be a good long-term solution to get into a co-op, but it's going to be a tough time to get in to a pool. So there's, there's a lot of things to consider, but what we do have a committee that talks about these things on a quarterly basis, and we do try to address the health of our members. That's, that's priority number one, right? We, we need, we need our employees to take ownership in their health. We need our employees to be healthier, right? And, and go through the screening. I think we were at 60, 70% went through the screening.
Y'all read all the data in July.
Yeah, yeah. We want to have 100% participation. We want 100% participation of the screening and them going to their doctor to have them look at the results, right? Put a plan together because that's part of the screening process. So that's probably the biggest thing we could do. But the suggestion, to your point, Ms. Wiley, is, is, you know, you talk to Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they want to reduce our benefits. That's how you lower your costs. And that's a tough one answer.
I, I just, if you're saying that to go to a pool or a co-op, that's, that's, we're not an attractive option to go. But when we continue to trend high, we're never going to be on. So at some point, it's worthwhile just to at least look at it.
Oh, no, no.
And find out what that might look like.
I agree.
Because I agree, we don't want to do anything to disrupt the healthcare for any of our employees, but this is not sustainable long-term, what's going on right now.
Ms. Charlie, both you and Dr. There have regular conversations with our brokers to analyze these things, and it's not necessarily as part of the budget, but there have been some meetings more recently to take a look at what are there, what things might they see that maybe can be done or looked at or to kind of go down some of our recent historical numbers there and do some double checking and auditing and looking at that as well as Blue Cross doing that. And so I know that some of those more recent conversations have been had of, hey, can we do some deep dives in here? And there'll probably be some follow-up things about maybe recommendations that could come to the insurance committee or things that they may find in those things that can come up over. So, because I was just a couple of weeks ago, or even last week, had some conversations of what can we do because we should continue to trend in a way? And we need to keep thinking outside the box about what might there be.
Yeah. And, and, and from a co-op, I keep saying co-op, but from a pool standpoint, when we talked about, well, we talked about this last year when we approved last year's budget because this, this was a hot topic last year as well. And at that point in time, you know, I reached out to a lot of my CSBO CFO friends of various school districts, almost every single district that we talked to, especially the pool districts. All the pools were incurring 17, 18, 20% increases in their rates. So they, they were incurring the same thing that we're seeing today. So, you know, I just want to bring that up as well, but we will certainly, as part of a health insurance committee, add that as part of the discussion, for sure.
So to me, there's kind of an elephant in the room here that's really not being discussed. Part of the issue is there aren't many young teachers entering the workforce. And so we are retaining an older workforce that is constantly aging along with their families. So as you have this kind of pool of employees, things are going to happen as people age. One of the advantages that we had 15 years ago, 10 years ago, is we were considered a young school district. And with the younger pool of employees, you don't have the kind of health issues that you do with older people. And now we have an aging population of employees, and I think it's inevitable that these things happen. And it's, you, you have to, how do you address an aging workforce? And it's going to continue that way until they cycle out, and you have a younger group of people that cycle in. And the younger group with their families are less averse to risk than the older people are. And it, it just is. So unless we're prepared to change our, our workforce, our median age of our workforce, you're going to continue to have this as people continue to age until people cycle out of the employment and you're replacing them. But even, even as we've seen the last few years, there are fewer and fewer teachers coming into the workforce, and it makes it even more challenging. And yet, we still have to fill the positions to teach our kids and, and continue to do good things for our students. So there, there's kind of an elephant in the room here that it becomes very difficult to mitigate because it's just the way that, that all of us work. We all get older. And that's a practical, that's a practical view, in my opinion.
And some of this is just the natural cycling of the demographics of our district. And we benefited from that for a fairly long period of time, as you said. But it, and once a certain amount of fund balances got built up, it was because there was favorable health insurance costs for many years. So, part of when you look at your fund balances is understand some of that's a little bit of a reserve for what's transpiring right now in that arena. So it's just, just part of being financially sound and stable and being able to absorb, quote-unquote, the cycle that's going on. Now, again, it is a fairly dramatic cycle, but, you know, again, we're premium-based, like you said. Premiums, if, you know, in the premium world, on this stuff has been pretty steep, you know? And so it's probably, over time, here over the last five years, we probably haven't really, you know, it probably hasn't hurt us this rate. It's just that we keep trending. That's, that's the underlying problem, is if we just keep trending on this meteoric, you know, incline, that's when we're going to run into a problem. But I, I'm confident that you will continue to explore any other options that might exist out there because I know, I know this insurance committee primarily tasked with it. Second board member.
Now, many you do. Yeah, I've outlined on this before on the insurance stuff, from a budget perspective, there's not a lot we can do. We kind of need to look at it for more than numbers are added. But, I mean, as you, Mr. Troy is saying, I do think there's a fundamental thing, which is they're trying to hold the individual markets down, the marketplace, to not show the big increases. And they are leveraging larger increases on large contracted organizations, putting the premiums there. I think that is ultimately what is happening so we can break off from the monopoly that we have in the state of Illinois. It can be very difficult to challenge that. So we'll have to look at ways to try to break through that. I mean, from a budget perspective, again, I would like to see a sub 2%. I understand this is a tentative budget. Appreciate Mr. Quagliano's comments that we could go through the year a little bit and see where we're going. There's obviously some benefits on the budget side. I have this hate desire to always try to squeeze budgets so that people don't go. And I don't think Ms. Lombard is a sprint spender, so I don't really have that problem. But they don't see the surplus and start spending. You know, Mr. Oldmeyer comes in with a nice new Apple computer or something like that. He gets his new laptop, that's fine. You won't see it. So any other, any other comments around the budget?
So when I look at a budget like this, sorry, when I look at this budget, I usually like to see it with, within like $3 million, $4 million. Because then, then anything that goes wonky or goes bump in the night that you're not expected, you're able to pretty well absorb it. It really has to go screwy in order for it to exceed that $4 million. So to me, this is a virtual zero. And, and it allows enough of a cushion so that if something was to go south, this doesn't become a deficit budget. So for me, this is, this is virtually zero, no different than what was presented earlier this year. It's just a little bit of a tweak by $100,000 here and there. And the size of, and the scope and magnitude of this budget, $100,000 is really not a very significant thing to me.
Other comments? Anyone kicking it off?
I'll make a motion to approve the tentative draft of the fiscal year '23 budget as presented.
Second. All right, can we get a roll off?
Mr. Cray?
Yes.
Mr. Bitnick?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
No.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
All right, that motion for the tentative budget passed at 6.1. We'll move on to a much more controversial item, number 13.3, supplemental purchase orders and account sales. Mr. [inaudible]. Mr. Allmeyer? Nothing to add. Nothing to add. All right, uh, any commentaries? All right, with that, I will make a motion to approve 13.3 supplemental purchase orders and accounts payable.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Quaglen, can I have a roll call?
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bittman?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Quaglen?
Yes.
All right, that passed at 0:13.4, bond issuance, issuance, parameters resolution. We have talked about this in the last couple of meetings. Anything to add?
Nothing, nothing to add. Um, have not received an update. Uh, should be receiving an update from Mesiro and PMA tomorrow. Uh, they have been working very hard to contact bondholders that they are aware of. Uh, but we are, we are receiving an update tomorrow on that. But in an effort to continue to move forward, um, as discussed at previous meetings, this is a parameter resolution. So that we can move forward as appropriate to, again, trying to say community, um, tax, additional tax, uh, that sort of state.
That, I'll make a motion to, unless there's commentary? Uh, I'll make a motion to move forward with 13.4 bond issuance parameters resolution. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Craddy. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Bittman?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quaglen?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
All right, with that, 13.4 passed at 7:00 material. We'll move to 13.5, the student handbook.
So the committee as a whole, we went through, um, the recommendations there and the security of those were in. Uh, the attendance and the behavior metrics, uh, component with some additions, just changes of language per, um, any policy changes or school code. And then there were, um, a variety of just updates with dates and when test, uh, testing windows were. Um, this is what they've been working on updating, name changes of, of things that positions, um, have been placed. And so, um, I wanted to put this as an action item and now after more, uh, instead of consent. But it's probably a good thing for that because we've had some reflection on something and I'm going to change my recommendation here, uh, tonight. And it's been, um, some conversation just in that component with the attendance and the behavioral links, um, to that. Uh, unserved consequences based on unexcused, the impact with curriculum and instruction. The majority of that, um, is, is at the high school level, just because it is very, very different there. And, um, so there's still a great amount of work that the committee at the secondary level are doing around, how do we tackle that attendance component? And then based on that, what is the appropriate, uh, response or action that needs to go with that? And so putting this forward, I think that in January, or January, July will be a little bit, um, different in what that process would look like and how that responds. So we'd be bringing forward that secondary to talk to, um, both Dr. McCrystal and Dr. Reilin today, saying my recommendation is that we would approve, um, the middle school, the elementary and the ECC tonight, knowing that that attendance component at the high school, had no idea that grad 80, we're going to talk about that component there. But I think a lot of people are really, we want to get it right. We want to make sure what's in the handbook is going to address and tackle the issue that we need to tackle appropriately. And, uh, so I'd like to recommend, um, that we table that and bring the high school, uh, handbook to the July meeting. Um, but, um, recommend approval tonight of, of middle school, uh, ECC and elementary handbook as presented in this session.
Is there a benefit to approving those tonight, just in case you have changes since you're bringing back the handbook? And do we, if we do it, it might be good, I don't know.
Yeah, no, um, I mean, it's, we, we need to do it in July just so it's ready to go because there are August dates in there. In looking at how, um, we handle an unexcused absence, um, is different at the elementary and middle schools. There's not a behavioral, um, consequence that goes with that. And there's a lot of reflection that, um, I was doing on the piece of, we need to change how an excused and an unexcused absence are coded. But there's going to be some unintentional consequences based on that. It's, it's the right work we need to do, but the way that it's handled right now is that first, unexcused absence is a warning. That second, unexcused absence is, um, a lunch detention. The third is a lunch detention, then the go-to and after-school detention. To me, if those are tied to a student skipping class, that makes sense. At a family wedding that they're going at and that student doesn't have, um, kind of a say in, hey, yep, I want to go to that, I want to be with my family, I want to go to that wedding, well, they're getting that warning. And now the next one might be, um, again, it's a family vacation. We want to make sure that, um, we are, um, arming families with, um, information so that they can make decisions. Maybe going on three or four vacations during the school year. Uh, but we, we know that some families are still going to be taking a vacation, um, with their family during that time. But we want those choices to be, we're not doing this plus this and that. So say we have that example of the wedding. So that first, um, instance again is the, the warning. Now maybe they take an extended vacation on weekend, they're gone two days. They're going as a family on that vacation for two days and a student is coming back with two detentions. They're already going to be impacted on the academic side of that. Now there's going to be, um, consequence on this when we know that there's natural consequences for missing class. We know that we need to address it and we need to tackle it, but I don't want to put something in there that's going to be unfair for certain types of absences. We also know that as these unexcused absences occur, once we hit a certain threshold, we're going to involve tribally. And so those are components that are again, a part of that natural, um, consequence piece of that. And so as we were looking at that, the way it's written right now, it's an all or nothing. And I do think that we would treat the skipping class very differently, you know, than some of these others that, yes, there'll be unexcused absences. Um, however, at some point, we're punishing a student for the adult decision on whether they will be at school. So we, we, we have looked at that and we want to make sure that that piece is right. We also know that there were a large number of students at the end of the school year that still had unserved. We need to find a better way to tackle that and putting that all together and having just a little bit more time as this committee continues to look, um, I think that we will have a more robust and impactful, um, way to handle that at the high school. It is also the area where we have the largest percent of chronic absenteeism, um, across the board. And so I don't think, uh, we will have, um, changes and maybe it's the things that they're doing in how they're intervening, working with parents. But that's not part of the handbook component of that. That's the actions of what are those team meetings and readings and bringing that parent in at the elementary and middle school level. So to answer your question, I think you'd be okay, moving forward on those three.
Good discussion.
So what we're talking about is the difference between what we specify in the handbook and what our policy is, is, as a district. Is this an opportunity and do we have time to address this in a forum with the, between parents and, and teachers in, in a meeting to kind of collaborate on what those definitions are?
Yes, so I think the P-TAC did a good job of that component of that. And some of you were at those meetings and maybe could, uh, chime in on that perspective on that. So looking at what constitutes, um, that, we had a lot of stakeholders, whether it was, um, through some of our committees in the district, um, as well as with P-TAC. So again, this would be more the procedural, how do we handle it component, um, of that, that, uh, we really spell out. Policy, I think we've got that strong and we're going to make those changes and how we code and how we campaign the importance here. So this is more just what are we doing now to address that?
So it seems to be a matter of consistency, both with, in the complex, potential conflicts between the handbook and as Mr. Andy pointed out, um, how administration, administration handles it, deans, principals, et cetera. So there has to be a basic level of understanding in order to put some teeth to repercussions.
Correct, and they would be part of that, um, working, um, mainly administratively with Mrs. Spear on that. I wrote down the MINGA, right? Nothing I had heard before about that. So listening to, to some of these things, because again, I don't know that, you know, that's consistent with, okay, you've got MINGA points, you can do that. But Jessica, you've got to now serve X number of these things and we want to make sure. It's meaningful, impactful, it's going to make a change because right now what we have is not making a change.
Understood.
And I just, I'm going to ask, you brought up the P-TAC. I think that P-TAC, there was a lot of discussion and with these changes, we're talking about having a bit of a campaign. I want it to, to your point, Mr. Thompson, the community needs to know this is coming and they can't find out about it when they fall for the first time. They go on their, their brief wedding. Um, all right, with that, unless there's other questions, I will make a motion to approve 13.5 with the exception of the high schools. We will only be approving handbooks for ECC, the elementary schools and the middle schools. Um, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, can I have a roll call?
Mr. Quaglen?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bittman?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Our vast passed at 7:00, meet 13.6, the kitchen makeup air unit replacement at Huntley High School. Mr. Thompson?
Um, this is a fortunate, unkindly event that took place in the last month. Uh, and it is a critical piece of equipment we need to operate the food service kitchen at Huntley High School. As we've been scrambling to put this together, we also did file an insurance claim. It has been recognized, it's been turned over from the, to the, to the insurance for the large equipment portion of the coverage. And it's under investigation right now, so I can't speak much more than that to that piece of it. Uh, there were some last minute changes in this negotiation. There's a lot of engineering that goes in the background to put this together on this 28-year-old piece of equipment. And, um, so there was an electronic posting today as we're packing up and update minor adjustments and our expectations on commissioning the equipment. Uh, that weren't, they're exactly like, uh, how we prefer them to be. Um, I'm confident this is a good place right now though. Um, I tried to explain why this is, this piece of equipment is so important. Uh, the only thing, if I could summarize, um, there's a large, large volume of air that gets exhausted from the, from the building kitchen over top of the equipment that's running to burn food. And if based on heat and combustibles from the natural gas-fired equipment underneath it, it's going to have difficulty in the smoke. And, um, um, if we don't have a system to bring air into the building in a controlled fashion to replace it, uh, we're going to make other portions of the building, uh, be, uh, very negatively pressured. Doors will slam, grill figures could get slammed in the door. Um, and the air is not filtered like we do when we control it temporarily when we bring it into the building to get proper traction. So I, I, this is a critical piece of equipment that's in every commercial kitchen to find out there if it's running properly. We don't have those problems I described, so be happy to answer any more questions.
Any questions? All right, I thought for a second we were in Congress, you wouldn't answer any questions for an ongoing investigation? Um, with that, I'll make a motion to approve 13.6 kitchen makeup air unit replacement at Huntley High School. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Troy. Can I have a roll call?
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Bittman?
Yes.
Mr. Quaglen?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
All right, with that, 13.6 passed at 7:00, we move to our second public comment. We added these public comments and nobody wants to speak anymore. So I don't see any offers of that. With not seeing any of that, I see 15 adjournments. Um, I will make a motion to adjourn at 9:13 PM.
Second.
Thanks, Mr. Quaglen, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, with that, motion passed.